Could you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here we have a roll call, please.
Mr. Corman?
Here.
Ms. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Person?
Here.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Ms. Breyer?
Here.
Mr. Swicker?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thank you, Bonnie. Moving on to the first item on the agenda, administrative report, Mr. Covington.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have one item I wanted to share with council and the community is several of you attended the official groundbreaking, I guess, or grand opening of the Renton area, Renton Ecumenical Area Churches Association's Center of Hope Day Care, Day Center, which is actually downstairs where our jail used to be. It's just a wonderful partnership of a number of faith organizations and other nonprofit organizations and service organizations in the area. It'll provide a place of safety and support for the homeless women and their children. A day shelter will be open Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Will provide breakfast, lunch, laundry facilities, showers, mail, computer, and phone access, as well as case management, vocational resources, and connections to community resources. And last, but certainly not least, a lot of caring support. It's expected that the first family will be in the shelter next week. And we wanted to invite members of the public who are interested to come and view the new Center of Hope Day Center for homeless women and children this week. It's beginning on Wednesday, and we'll have tours Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The, again, the Day Center is located here in City Hall, the P2 level. Volunteers will be on hand in the lobby area to explain the shelter and what the different rooms will be used for. And some people can come in, and then we'll have one of the volunteers come up and get you. Again, just want to thank the Renton Ecumenical Area Churches Association for all that they have done and for all the other organizations. And I know those of us that were there were very, very impressed by the folks who put this together. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Mr. Covington. And I also wanted to thank our city staff that worked really hard with them to help get this facilitated, and it's been a wonderful transformation from what used to be a jail to a place that's a very welcoming and very safe environment for these women and children. So it's a great partnership, and so this was a great example of things that we're doing well in the city. Next is audience comment, and when I call your name, please come to the podium. Give your name, city of residence. For the record, you have five minutes, and we have a big timer here with big lights, so keep an eye on that. First is Paul Olet.
Evening. My name is Paul Olet from Renton. I didn't mean to be the first one, by the way. I want to talk about the library, but first I'd give you an update on the smart meters and the birds. As I mentioned before, yes, some of the birds are back. It seems like it's mostly the larger birds. This morning, I had a mourning dove, which I hadn't seen for months. The small birds are not around. They seem to, I get the sparrows and a few of the big birds. But anyway, that's besides the point. As you know, I met with the engineering department, and Abdul called me, and he was happy that I had said my birds were back. Unfortunately, I don't think he really totally understood. I want to publicly thank Brian of the Renton Reporter for his article. I think he was fair. Now, if you ask me to prove it, I can't. I still believe that there's an impact of the meters, but I'm glad to say that at least we have some of the bigger birds. This morning, I had a grosbeak. It's unusual. Okay, on the library, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Covington, as you know, I spoke about the Cedar River Library, and we want to thank you for, at least, doing whatever you can to help the citizens become part of the team in improving a larger library, even though it's not as big as they wanted, but at least it's a step forward. Also, with respect to the entrance, as you know, I've made a couple of comments the last couple of weeks, and I sent an email to you, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Covington, suggesting that, or rather, asking, have you sent any communications to KCLS and Milahow relative to the, including the additional entrance to the bridge? Has there been any communications?
The council sent a communication loud and clear to them that they wanted to see what could be done to put the door where you were talking about, and that's still in the works.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, in addition to that, I think the information that Mr. Olet provided to staff, we forward that on. As we have over the last number of months, but specifically the information you gave before, we're then onto KCLS, and let them, so they have that, and they're considering that as they continue to work on their design.
Okay, that was my question. It has been forwarded to them. Is it possible that you could send me a copy of some of your correspondence? Or should I ask for a public information request, or get a copy of some of the communications?
Correspondence would be the minutes of what you said to the council.
No, how was the information that we conveyed about the possibility of having that entrance conveyed to Milahow and KCLS?
Much of it is done directly by Peter Renner, who has conversations with them directly.
Verbal.
Yes.
You're talking about verbal communication.
We'll double check, Mr. Olet. I believe that the email that you sent to Mayor Law and myself, I think we just, I forwarded that on to Mr. Renner, and he probably forwarded it in verbatim on. We'll double check and see. There's no, certainly no attempt to, we're not trying to obfuscate the data. As you've given it to us, you gave us feedback, as other people in the audience have over the past number of months, and we've actually referred KCLS to both the audio and to the visual minutes of the meetings, as well as if there's written information, we forward that on to them, too. So they have what you gave us, I'm quite sure, but we'll confirm that.
I'm not questioning your intent, obviously, and I guess because, only because in the past, before recent meetings and stuff like that, there's been a reluctance on the part of KCLS to accept any of the comments from the public. And so, wanted to have some sort of assurance that it's not going to a blank wall to the committee here, rather, but it's going, it's being forwarded on to KCLS and Milahow. That's the reason that I had asked also, is that have you requested for Milahow to resubmit the schematic design drawing that would show the entrance? Otherwise, their consultants, all the other consultants would not have the information unless they resubmit that schematic design drawing, the plan that they showed at a meeting over here with the 19,500, okay? And that's the one that showed only a single entrance. But it doesn't show, there's nothing been reported yet that they intend or to even look at that additional entrance. And so, I'm just urging you guys to be cautious with KCLS, okay? With respect to the other question that I had very quickly, with respect to the budget breakdown, as you know, when the council approved the minutes here, they approved it with the additional funding, for a million and a half because of the larger square footage. Have you requested KCLS to submit a revision to the budget breakdown? And also, what is your status on getting that independent consultant? Have you made any progress on hiring a consultant? I would suggest that you not wait until the construction documents come back, and also, especially where the Highlands Library is going to come into play here recently, in the near future. I would suspect that KCLS will be prepared to ask you for some more money. And therefore, I would ask that you make some progress on getting that out, get started. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next is the consent agenda. We have six items for council consideration. She wants to do it. Are any items that council member would like pulled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
I move approval of the consent agenda as published.
Second. The move by Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. Taylor, that council concur with the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Corman.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Palmer?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Person?
Uh, I think we have a Public Safety Committee reporter in case waiting.
Public Safety Committee report, adoption of case waiting policies and procedures. The Public Safety Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to adopt the City of Renton case waiting policies and procedures in response to the Washington State Supreme Court's new standards for indigent defense. That became effective in part on October 1st, 2012, with the remaining becoming effective on September 1st, 2013, and October 1st, 2013. The Washington State Supreme Court adopted NSID with the intent of ensuring that each indigent criminal defendant receives effective representation, and that each attorney working with an indigent criminal defendant provides quality representation by having the necessary time. The committee further recommends that the resolution regarding this matter be presented for first reading, and this is signed by the three committee members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move that council concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Second.
The move by Mr. Person.
Of the Public Safety Committee.
I'm sorry.
Move by Mr. Person, seconded by Ms. Breyer, that council concur with the Public Safety Committee report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
That's it.
Okay, Mr. Prince?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Breyer?
Yes, the Finance Committee has two reports.
Finance Committee report, approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves for payment on May 20th, 2013, claim vouchers 320645 through 321023, one wire transfer and one payroll run with benefit withholding payments totaling $5,329,924.69. And payroll vouchers include 725 direct deposits and 59 payroll checks totaling $1,560,575.79. This is signed by the three committee members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee report.
Second.
The move by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Mr. Person, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Finance Committee report, maintenance worker three position to lead maintenance worker position. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve a minor reorganization of the public works surface water maintenance section to convert a maintenance worker three position to a lead maintenance worker position and hire at grade A16, step D, to satisfy the promotional pay provision called for by the ASME, union, local 2170 contract. This is signed by the three committee members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee report.
Second.
The move by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Mr. Person, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
That's all I have, sir.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Swicker?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Taylor?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Alrighty, moving on to resolutions and ordinances, we have three resolutions and three ordinances for second and final reading.
The first resolution regards a street vacation request. A resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, setting a public hearing date for vacating a portion of right-of-way Sunset Lane Northeast from Northeast 10th Street to Harrington Avenue Northeast.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
I move adoption of the resolution. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. Swicker, that council adopt the resolution as read. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The next resolution regards the 2013 transportation investment package. A resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, in strong support of a 2013 transportation investment package.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
I move adoption of this resolution.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. Prince, that council adopt this resolution as read. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The next resolution regards the case waiting policies and procedures. A resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, adopting the City of Renton case waiting policies and procedures to comply with the Washington State Supreme Court's new standards for indigent defense.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
I move that this resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
The move by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Mr. Person, that this resolution be adopted as read. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
There are three ordinances for second and final reading. The first regards the school district impact fees. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Section 41160 of Chapter 1 Administration and Enforcement of Title IV Development Regulations of City Code, setting the impact fee at $3,738 per new single-family home in the Issaquah School District, retaining the impact fee of $5,486 per new single-family home, and $3,378 per new multifamily home in the Kent School District, setting the impact fee at $6,395 per new single-family home, and $1,308 per new multifamily home in the Renton School District, and adopting the capital facilities plans of the three school districts.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Mr. Swicker, that this ordinance be adopted as read. Requires a roll call.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Ms. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Ms. Breyer?
Aye.
Mr. Swicker?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
The ayes have it.
The next ordinance for second and final reading regards a code amendment regarding school impact fee waivers. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Section 41160 of Chapter 1 Administration and Enforcement of Title IV Development Regulations of City Code, adding a new subsection 41160E4 regarding school impact fees waiver payment under protest and appeals.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
I move this ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
The move by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Mr. Swicker, that this ordinance be adopted as read, and requires a roll call.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Ms. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Ms. Breyer?
Aye.
Mr. Swicker?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
The ayes have it. Thank you.
And the last ordinance for second and final regards the funding bond issuance for streetlight conversion. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing the issuance and sale of a limited general obligation bond of the city in the principal amount not to exceed $3,200,000 for the purpose of financing streetlight improvements as part of a green community program, providing the form of the bond and authorizing the sale of the bond.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
I move this ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Mr. Swicker, that this ordinance be adopted as read, and this requires a roll call.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Ms. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Ms. Breyer?
Aye.
Mr. Swicker?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
The ayes have it. Thank you very much, Bonnie. Moving on to new business, Mr. Corman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, a couple of announcements. The first is a reminder to the council and the community that we will not be having a council meeting next week. In fact, Monday is a city holiday, so there will be no meetings that day. And happy Memorial Day to everybody. Hope everybody has a good time. And then, I do want to say, though, the following Monday, June 3rd, we have a committee, the whole meeting. That should be an interesting one. In fact, it was alluded to earlier during audience comment. It will be from 5:30 p.m. to 7 o'clock p.m. here in the council chambers, and the topic will be the Highlands Library schematic design and related agreements. So people interested in the Highlands Library would like to come to that meeting, I think. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Corman. Ms. Palmer?
Yes, the Transportation Aviation Committee normally set for this Thursday has been canceled. And then, speaking of Memorial Day, did you say anything about Memorial Day, Mr. Covington?
I did not.
Okay, well, I have it right here, the press release in front of me. Next Monday is Memorial Day, and the city will be honoring our veterans at 1:00 at the Veterans Memorial Park, which is right next to Uptown Glassworks. And I look forward to seeing you there. We always have some, a lot of people show up, and it's a very touching time. So I will be there. And that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Person?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, first of all, the transporta, transportation, no, I'm not talking about transportation. Public Safety Committee for next week is canceled, or for June 3rd is canceled. And I also asked Mr. Covington to put on the Elmo that on June 7th, there will be a fundraising event at the Renton Community Center. It's a free, you can come to it free. It's going to be really exciting. There'll be a dinner starting from 5:30 to 6:30, and then a presentation by Tony Ventrella, and he's promised to bring somebody exciting from the Seahawks. We're not sure who that will be yet, so that'll make it very interesting. And during dinner, there'll be a Cherry Cherry, it's a band that'll play Neil Diamond hits and that kind of thing, a very, very good. Pre-registration is required, though. It's free, but we just want to be sure, I've got a cooking crew together, and we want to be sure we have enough food for everybody, so it helps when the people pre-register. So they can call 425-430-6700, or visit us on the computer at cybersignup.org and register for class 52519. If you're like me, you'll make, you'll call the phone number because you won't remember all of that information. So, and you could call just about anybody in the city, and they'll help you with it.
You bet. Look for a website, too, we'll have it up there.
It's going to be really a fun and exciting time. We'd love to see you there, and like I say, it is free, however, there will be an ask. I'm not going to try and hide that from you. And the reason is that we've got this wonderful playground, and we're starting construction, and we're $100,000 short of adding a couple extra optional pieces of play equipment that are for special needs kids, and I, I've heard so many stories about this, and it just brings tears to your eyes when you hear the stories of what this will provide for, not just the handicapped kids and special needs kids, but for all the kids. And that's the, that's what's so unique about this, is that it's for everybody. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll be quiet.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Prince?
Mr. Mayor, there's no way I can top. So I will say I have no new business.
Okay, Ms. Breyer?
Yes, the Finance Committee will meet on Monday, June 3rd, from 4:30 to 5:00 p.m. We will be going over vouchers and looking at emerging issues and revenue streams. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Swicker.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on Monday, June 3rd, at 9:00 a.m., the Planning and Development Committee will be meeting in the council conference room to discuss one item, and that is the docket nine briefing. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Taylor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Community Services Committee will be meeting on June 3rd, Monday. Pardon me?
Sorry, go ahead, you're right.
As I was saying, Community Services Committee will be meeting on Monday, June 3rd, from 5:00 p.m. to 5:30 in the council conference room, and we will be discussing the Maplewood Golf Course cart fee purchase. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to audience comment, Audrey Adams?
Hi, my name's Audrey Adams and I'm a resident of Renton. Wow, this is shocking. I said at the end, I wanted to speak at the end, and here we are, it's not even 7:25 yet. What a wonderful day it is today. I had a very interesting meeting today with somebody who helped me do a better job of understanding your perspectives, and I appreciate that very much. And I think I've said a number of times, but it needs to be said again, that I've spoken a lot of places as a board member of Washington Action for Safe Water. You know what my deal is. And this really is the best council, the best body that I've spoken to, and I've spoken to over 50 legislators with their aides, I've spoken to the Washington State Board of Pharmacy, I've multiple times, the Washington State Board of Health, countless times, and many, many other places, including other cities. And this really is the best one. And so, it was pointed out that maybe I shouldn't be picking on you because you're so good. And so, I want to, I'm asking your help, because I recognize that you've spent a lot of time on this issue, and I also recognize that you only want to do what's best for the citizens of Renton, and so we're totally on the same page. But maybe you can help me by perhaps telling me, I'd like to get more involved in educating some people, key people in the community, and you, of course, have many more connections than I do, even though I've lived here 34 years, but you know a lot of people. And so, I would love your help in perhaps identifying some people who may, who I could talk to. I got a couple suggestions today, but there are many more, I'm sure, that I don't know that I would really appreciate that. And I've been putting off for two months, bringing forth a particular document, a study, and I decided I'm not going to do that in this venue, because I would really like to present it to each one of you individually. I do not want to be the one that appears to be yelling "fire" in a crowded theater. That's the last thing I want to do, actually. I really want to educate and to find solutions. And, Mr. Mayor, I completely and wholeheartedly agree with you that we all should be able to trust the agencies that we, that we have in place, that should be able to give us reliable information. And there's something broken in the system, and that's part of the problem. It's a problem that you've inherited, as well as me. That takes a lot more time to explain. Anyway, tomorrow, I'm going to contact Julia and ask to make appointments with each one of you, and if there are any of you who really don't want to talk to me, tell her so that I won't waste your schedule. But I have some information I would rather not present publicly, I'd rather present it to you individually, and so I appreciate that very much, and thank you for all you do. And I also want to say that, you know, you have some pretty special people working for the city, and some of them go unrecognized, and I just want to say you have some awesome staff people here. Appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Audrey, appreciate the nice comments. Mr. Covington?
Yes, Mr. Mayor? If I could, I so appreciate, uh... Paul Marcy, I had a brain cramp, sorry. Getting at the issue of the Veterans Day celebration, and I apologize.
Memorial Day?
Memorial Day.
Don't push my summer out.
That's okay. Maybe I should have, now I just lost it, so.
It's still cramping, that's okay.
You want me to read it?
I'll try, and Marcy, you can fill in. Just to let folks know, it is at 1:00 at our Veterans Memorial Park, which is the corner of Third and Main. VFW Post 1263 is helping to coordinate that, and there will include a wreath laying to honor the five branches of military service, and some national anthem will be performed. There'll be an invocation as well. So it should be a nice event, it won't last too long, but we would encourage folks to come on out and certainly pay their respects to those who have served both from here at home and who have served abroad, and especially those who fall in the line of duty. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Jay? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
I know that we've still got space, physically, space, there's a lot of tiles that haven't been engraved yet. I haven't seen us talk about that in recent years. Would people contact the VFW, or if they have people that they'd like to honor by having their names engraved?
You know, we have, we have a number that they can contact, and what we'll do is have that prepared to hand out at the event, but then also to present that to you at our next meeting. We're also doing some repair work on the memorials themselves. The original ones were, I don't know if you noticed it, but they were washed out.
Yeah.
And so, we're fixing all that.
Okay, good.
We'll give you an update on that.
Good, okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, more audience comment.
Anyhow, I'm Jeanne Green Crook. I'm Renton resident and I'm with Audrey. And you know that I really would like our water system to go back and be as pristine as it could be. I know we have to have chlorine and things in there for it, but if we don't have to have the fluoride in it, we can naturally get it from our dentist or in our toothpaste. That would be great. I really feel strongly about that. Also, I want to concur with Paul Olet on the library. I think that he's doing a great job on keeping an eye on everything. And I'm still concerned about the library entrance. And I just want to make note that we have two parking lots that need to be addressed. So we need an entrance accessible for both.